Hello, friends, and welcome to the regularly scheduled May 16th, 2023 Eureka City Council meeting. Welcome, we're glad you're all here and look forward to hearing from you. So we're going to start this meeting with a land acknowledgement. Oh, is my mic, yeah, my mic's on. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. Okay, and there was no report out of closed session this evening? So let's begin with the roll call.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
And Mayor Burgal?
Here.
And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I'm not moving. Hold on just a minute. No, I didn't forget it, I promise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we are going to move on to mayor announcements, and we have a presentation, I mean, excuse me, a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Maggie, would you want to come up and receive that? I know. So Maggie, I have the proclamation in my office, I'm sorry, I'll get it to you, though. Thank you.
All right. In recognition of Older Americans Month, May 2023, whereas older adults play vital positive roles in our communities as family members, friends, mentors, volunteers, civic leaders, members of the workforce, and more, and whereas diverse communities are strong communities, and ensuring that older adults remain involved and included in our communities for as long as possible benefits everyone, and whereas, just as every person is unique, so too is how they age and how they choose to do it, and there is no right way, and whereas it benefits everyone when older adults can age in their communities, living independently for as long as possible, and participating in ways they choose. Now, therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that the City Council of the City of Eureka recognizes May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. We urge residents to take time during this month to recognize older adults who are aging their way and serving our community.
And I know we have a presentation in a few minutes, but if you'd like to say a few words now?
Okay, sure, thank you, I appreciate, thank you very much, Mayor Burgal and council members, for this opportunity to come and check in with you a little bit, which we'll do after that, but I did want to start by just reading you a quote from a woman named Ashton Applewhite. She wrote a book called This Chair Rocks, and she spent her, the last 20 or so years talking about ageism and ableism and how it impacts us, and I wanted to read this quote. Aging isn't a problem to be solved, or a disease to be cured, or something icky that old people do. It's how we move through life, and more of us are doing more of it than ever before in human history. What stands between us and making the most of these longer years? Ageism. Judging, stereotyping, and discriminating against people on the basis of how old we think they are. Ageism is what we experience anytime someone assumes that we are either too old or even too young for something, instead of finding out who we are and what we're capable of. But we can fight ageism. And she goes on to point out that the keys to fighting it are awareness, first of all, to acknowledge our own prejudices about aging and age, and then the next thing is integration. Spend time with people in different walks of life, different ages, connect with people of different ages, because an equitable society for all ages requires that we have intergenerational collaboration. And lastly, activism. Watch for age's behaviors and attitudes in and around us, and challenge them, and create language and models that support every stage of life. Let's stop calling people boomers or millennials. How about, hey, it's a younger person, it's an older person. Doing this is simpler, it's also accurate, and it doesn't divide or stereotype, because it emphasizes that we all age in relation to others, and that some of us are older and some of us are younger, but we're on this ride together. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, real quickly, is we are conducting a two-county survey as part of the first-ever statewide survey of older adults. We've always done our own thing in each different area agency, but this year the state is doing it statewide. And we're in the middle of our survey now, and some people may have received some of this in the mail already. We're encouraging anyone aged 55 and older to complete the survey online in the month of June, or even now, I think you can get in there and do it, and if you want to get more information about that, you can call our office. If you're unable to fill out the survey online, we can provide somebody with a paper survey to do, and it's really looking about, it's looking at a lot of things that this city already looks at, you know, what makes a community good to live in, you know, what kinds of things do we all need to thrive, and it's asking some of those questions to this population, so we're really excited about that. The last thing, tomorrow afternoon, from 1:00 to 3:00, we're having a little birthday party, because the Older Americans Act is like 65-plus years old, but Older Americans Month is 60 years old, and area agencies on aging are now 50 years old. We happen to be only 43, and I don't mean that in a bad way, it's a good age, 43, but we're having a little party, birthday party, so between 1:00 and 3:00, we're having an open house at our place over on J Street, 333J. We welcome the community to come, have a piece of cake, learn about our services and volunteer opportunities at our location, because so much of what we do can only be done with community involvement and volunteers. So I want to thank you for that and for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, under Mayor's reports, a lot has happened in the last two weeks, and you can find all that on my Facebook page, so I'm just going to cover some of the highlights. This May is Mental Health Month, and so there'll be activities happening. Today, I went on the Mental Health Walk, which I've done for several years. It's an opportunity to bring awareness to what is happening, and it's to really support and show that every person has value, and that someone who may have a mental illness, that is one piece of that person, that should not define who they are, and it's also a real big part of just bringing community together and to have these conversations, so that people realize that they are supported, and that there is support out there if you need it. And as I've said before, COVID has really exacerbated a lot of the mental health issues, and so it's really important that we continue to focus on bringing new things forward. There'll be a barbecue at Jefferson this Friday with mental health, and that's on my Facebook page, if you want to know the times, but that's always a real fun time, you get to meet a little, a lot of different people, various ranges of experiences, and I'll tell you, something that's really neat is to have those opportunities to hear people's stories, and to realize that, you know, I think a lot of the time, we forget that we're a lot more similar than we are different, and looking for similarities is really important. Second, and so exciting, is June 4th will be our second in our series of town halls. That will be here at City Hall from 1:00 to 4:30. Doors open at 1:00. It actually starts at 1:30. We have five different speakers, and they'll be talking about the dynamics of the unhoused. I think it's going to be a really robust conversation. We're hopeful that you bring your complaints, bring your solutions, you know, just come, and we'd like to just have a really robust and respectful conversation. That's always really nice to have a respectful conversation, so we're looking forward to that. Just a couple of things that are happening in the community today, by the way, no, yesterday, today's the 15th, yesterday was the 15th, was National Peace Officers Memorial Day, so just want to take a moment of silence if we can. Thank you for joining me in that. I think it's really important that we respect our officers, they do a great work, they do hard work, and they deal with a lot more than many of us, and so I really want to share my appreciation with those and those that we have lost. Couple reminders, this Saturday is the Kite Festival, and if you've never been, it's super fun, it's down at the Halverson Park, and then there will be Bike Month stuff happening down at the gazebo, and at, I think that's also at the Jefferson Project Saturday as well. So there's plenty to do in our city, you don't have to be bored, and lots of fun things to do, so we hope to see you out and about. And with that, we shall go to our presentations. Area One Agency on Aging. So if Maggie, you want to come back up?
Yeah, go ahead, thank you. Thank you, hi again. We like to come and present to you every year during Older Americans Month specifically about how, what we've been doing with the funding you provide our organization. You have been supporting our Volunteer Driver Program for many years, and this last year, you added extra support to help us with our Home Share Program, which is to match people with housing up to people looking for a room. We've talked a lot about homelessness, about affordability, about lack of housing, and while this is certainly not the only solution, it's a small part of that solution, and it does make a difference for the people we're helping, some of these people, well, you'll, I don't want to steal her thunder, so I will stop there, but on, in the magic of the Zoom world, she's coming to us from Del Norte, Megan Gallagher, who is our Social Services Manager, and she would like to do the presentation, answer any of your questions about what we've been doing in the last year, so thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can. Hi, Megan, welcome.
Yes, Megan. In order for the audience and for you to be able to control the slides, if you can share your screen?
Definitely.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so you guys are seeing the slides?
Yes.
Okay, so as Maggie mentioned, your guys' funding has been huge in helping us support two of our social services programs. The first one is our Volunteer Driver Program, and that program allows older adults or people living with disabilities to have door-to-door service, transportation, to get to medical appointments, or to grocery shopping. And this is huge, because anyone who knows an older adult or someone living with a disability knows that it's often very difficult to take public transportation, oftentimes they've lost their licenses, or in low-income situations, they can't afford the astronomical gas prices. And so this program is made possible thanks to our volunteers. We had seen a huge drop in volunteer numbers because of COVID. As you see, the average age of our volunteers is usually an older adult themselves, so I'm very happy to report that as we're kind of coming out of this COVID period, we have seen an uptick, and part of what we've used the funding for is really doing some outreach geared towards volunteers, and so just in the last three months alone, when we kind of have done that campaign, we've been able to add four new volunteers. So that is very exciting. It's also a very, very flexible program to volunteer for. So anyone who has a busy life that would love to volunteer but can't always commit to the same time on a regular basis, talk to me, and I'll tell you some more about the volunteer opportunity with our Driver Program. The other program that we have been working on is our North Coast Home Share Program, and so this was a program that we got our first funding for it in the start of COVID. February 2020, we made our first match, so we have been successfully growing since then, despite COVID, and what we have seen in just the last year alone is an increase in the number of matches. So our first two years, we were averaging about 10 matches a year, so, you know, we got 12 this year, it's a little bit of an increase, but it's still great for a program as small as ours. And we're also seeing our average match length be extended. So not only do we now have a match that's been going for over three years, well, three years in June, I guess I should say, but we've also seen just the average match increase from nine months that it was last year to a little over 11 months now, which is great, because that means people are finding stable, longer-term housing. And this is a program that even though we are the Area One Agency on Aging, it is open to people of all ages. So as you see, we have, what is that, you know, 70-year spread between the clients that have been helped with this program. And then I really wanted to mention that the great thing about the Home Sharing Program is it is reaching that lower-income population. Some of our rental or match agreements involve a reduced amount of rent for services, and so that has really brought down our average rent to something that is closer to that affordable range, if you're living on kind of the lowest income. And then I wanted to highlight a direct mailing that we did, thanks to the funding that we received for the city of Eureka, because it was widely successful. We had an overflowing office during a meet-and-greet that we did, and not only did it just create a ton of buzz for the program, but we got seven new applicants, and really, the thing is, six of those seven people are people that have housing. So for the first time in our program's history, we now have more people that have housing and are looking for people to move in than a stack of people looking for housing, which is really exciting, because we know that there's plenty of people out there that need housing. So we are just going to keep plugging along and watching the program grow through the years. And that is everything I have, just a little quick presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Megan. Do we have any questions? No? Councilmember Castellano?
It's not a question, I just want to appreciate your work, especially when it comes to the innovation you're doing at the housing program. It's so great to find those mutually beneficial opportunities that can at least alleviate some of the strain we have in the housing market, so thank you for that, and I know it takes a lot of follow-up and work, and, you know, but it's such a cool program.
Thank you, and we've been in lots of meetings where we've talked about housing, and it takes a long time to build housing and go through the process, but the houses that we're looking at and keyed into are already existing. There are people living in them who may need a little extra help and a little more interaction with others, and it's just ripe, it's just a ripe place for us to be able to encourage that kind of connection, and it helps everybody, so it's a nice win-win, and we just, we just need to keep growing it, we need to have more housing, people with housing, and because we know there are people looking, so they've, it's been great, and we really appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, and I too wanted to share my appreciation, and also to share my appreciation to the people that have stepped up to volunteer. What a great opportunity for people, and I just love how in our community, we have people with such generous spirits that are willing to step up and be a part of, and have these dialogues in a respectful and kind way, so thank you so much, Maggie.
You bet, thank you.
Anything further? Nope? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we are going to be hearing about our Forest Moon Festival from Jim Thomas. Exciting things happening.
All righty, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I'm glad to be here tonight, representing the Community Services Department, to formally invite you all and the community to one of our upcoming events here on June 3rd at Sequoia Park. It is an all-ages event with a galactic lineup of activities, so starting at 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, all of the activities will be free, too, at the Sequoia Park that day. There will be an all-ages event going with inflatable Saber Stations, Rebel Training Obstacle Course, a Color the Galaxy coloring booth, a Wise Green Creature temporary tattoo booth, a Saber Showdown game, a Galactic Big Foot Call competition at 2:30, a costume contest at 3:30, and then we'll transfer into some other events, starting at 7:00 with a, there's a group called the Saber Legion that's going to join us and put on a little bit of a show. At 7:30, there will be live music and a special appearance from Costumers, and at 8:45, there will be free admission. The Humboldt County and Del Norte County Film Commission is going to be screening Return of the Jedi. We'll also have Shaved Ice, and Low Skyle's food truck will be there, providing some services of food, so I really hope everybody can make it that would be interested in coming. It's all ages, going to be really fun for kids or adults that would want to attend. I think it's a really cool offering from the Community Services Department, working with the Film Commission, and it's a cool partnership with a lot of different activities. You may have known it as May the 4th last year, this year it's under Forest Moon, and it's a countywide event, so it should be a pretty big time, pretty fun, I think it's going to be a great thing for everybody. Also, I did want to share, at the last minute, I got some news from the zoo, what they're going to be doing, and excuse me for reading this verbatim, because I want to make sure I get it right, because I wasn't as much a part of the planning as this one, but it's a save the date for June 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:30. It's an all-ages after-hours event, so you can be at Sequoia Park and then go straight over to the zoo for their addition of the event as well. So come enjoy an intergalactic-themed dinner before the big movie screening of Return of the Jedi at Sequoia Park. Wear your best outer-space costume and dance the night away. Explore and take photos on the Redwood Skywalk, a perfect Forest Moon setting. Try an individual family meal from Eco's Cafe. Explore the zoo. Enjoy breathtaking aerial views of the forest at twilight, and see some alien animals that call Earth home. We'll have a Cantina cocktail and mocktails in a galaxy not so far away. See you on the Forest Moon. And we're keeping updates posted on our Facebook page, the Community Services Facebook page, as well as the City of Eureka's Facebook page, and yeah, I think it should be a really fun day, and hope to see as many community members out there enjoying themselves and just having a really good time, and I'm lucky to be a part of it, yeah.
Fabulous. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Yep.
Comments? Thank you so much, it's going to be a great time.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate the time.
Come out and join us. Great, so moving on, we'll move to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So, let me just make sure, oh yes, I've got this, so they have a time allotment here, but we're not going to look at that, because I don't know that we'll go over 30 minutes. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, I think this might be a little tall, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, oh, Mayor, Council, I'm sure you recall the last City Council meeting when you and the councilor asked if you had reviewed and signed the Code of Ethics. Only the mayor gestured she had. How about the rest of you, Council? Originally, that's what I thought I would be here today to speak about, however, I now suspect that it's not laziness that's prevented the code from being reviewed annually, it's flat-out refusal. This language in the Code of Ethics is standard in politics, and much of this language is found in the League of California Cities, your role as a local elected official document. The League of California Cities represents 99% of the cities in California, and Eureka is included, Miles. This means you're required and expected to follow these terms by joining the Council. To be an ethical public official at bare minimum requires transparency. You should serve with honesty and integrity, and at the service of the people who put you in the very seat that you sit. It is your duty to remain open-minded on positions of others and to work collaboratively with others to serve the community, not your hidden agendas. I thought I'd be here today to speak largely about the various ethical violations and conflicts of interest surrounding Leslie Castellano and the Ink People. The Ink People, which Leslie Castellano is executive director for, house HGR, who show support for violent riots on their social media. We urge the community to look at the facts, do not assume, because we live in this rural area, that riots like we've seen in Portland won't happen here. Politically motivated acts of violence aren't some new phenomena, and if we don't pay attention, it'll happen in our Humboldt County. Let the people decide what they want to support, instead of trying to hide under the guise of donating to arts and culture. While there are some honest and moral and unknowing dreammakers involved, scratch the surface, and what do you find with the Ink People? An anarchist political agenda. Conservative, liberal, the right and the left wing belong to the same bird.
Minutes are up. Bring it back to the middle.
Thank you for participating, we appreciate you being here.
And answer our questions and be transparent.
Answered questions.
Appreciate you being here. Hi, Mr. Gomez.
In 2003, I opened my first retail business in Eureka called The Fertile World. Within five years, we had additional locations in Fortuna, Arcata, and Santa Rafael. Over 20, over the 20 years, I've established five businesses in the city of Eureka and have employed hundreds of people. I've contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years to the coffers of the city through property taxes, sale tax, cannabis permitting fees, and other taxes. Miles, Mayor, the good people of the city of Eureka, and the taxpayers of the city of Eureka deserve to know what the hell is going on, and who our money is funding, and what their true agenda is. I didn't just move here six years ago to infiltrate the school board and our City Council, Mr. Mario Fernandez, I actually have children in our local schools. Councilmember Mario Fernandez is also an author and organizer for a radical and violent anarchist organization that publishes a newspaper called Humboldt Grassroots. This violent organization has been supported, funded, organized, housed, and incubated directly by the Ink People, who Leslie Castellano is executive director of, who have been supporting a violent anarchist agenda for many years now. The hidden anarchist agenda wants to perpetuate violent crime, and homelessness, drug addiction, and crime in our communities. Councilmember Castellano, Katie, Moulton, Texas, and Mario Fernandez are all affiliated and bound by their anarchist agenda, and should be recusing themselves when it comes to anything having to do with the safety of our community, since their true agenda is anarchy. Unfortunately, the mayor and the city manager have allowed them to ignore the Code of Ethics, which has ultimately led to this infiltration. This council voted to waste $90,000 of taxpayers' money to hire an out-of-town firm to audit EPD. That money could have been used on an annual salary for two more police officers to keep the streets safer. There is absolutely nothing ethical about a majority of our council being anarchists, and maybe we're just scratching the surface here. Either way, people who organize, house, finance, and incubate a movement that wants to abolish the Police Department should not be voting on whether we should be funding the Police Department. It's a dangerous conflict of interest, Miles. Just this year, Councilmember Castellano in Synapsis hosted several anarcho events to help organize and spread her anarchist agenda under the guise of a zumba class. The definition of anarcho is a person who rebels, who rebels against authority, established order, and from the ruling power, and a person who advocates and promotes anarchy. It's time to go on record and admit that you, Councilmember Castellano, Mario Fernandez, and you, Katie, Texas, are anarchists, and incubating and fulfilling an anarchist agenda. The majority vote of this council is dictated by anarchists with no Code of Ethics to stop them. Let that sink in. I have friends and family who've sacrificed their lives for democratic institutions, and I'll be damned if I allow you to dishonor their service. How do you feel, Scott? Law enforcement? Are you under their flag? Are you under the flag, the democratic flag of the United States of America? It's time to answer questions. Anarchists.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. So friends, before we have our next comment-
This council voted to waste $90,000 of taxpayers' money to hire an out-of-town firm to audit EPD. That money could've been used on an annual salary for two more police officers to keep the streets safer. There is absolutely nothing ethical about a majority of our council being anarchists, and maybe we're just scratching the surface here. Either way, people who organize, house, finance, and incubate a movement that wants to abolish the Police Department should not be voting on whether we should be funding the Police Department. It's a dangerous conflict of interest, Miles. Just this year, Councilmember Castellano in Synapsis hosted several Anarcho events to help organize and spread her anarchist agenda under the guise of a Zumba class. The definition of anarcho is a person who rebels, who rebels against authority, established order, and from the ruling power, and a person who advocates and promotes anarchy. It's time to go on record and admit that you, Councilmember Castellano, Mario Fernandez, and you, Katie, Texas, are anarchists and incubating and fulfilling an anarchist agenda. The majority vote of this council is dictated by anarchists with no Code of Ethics to stop them. Let that sink in. I have friends and family who've sacrificed their lives for democratic institutions, and I'll be damned if I allow you to dishonor their service. How do you feel, Scott? Law enforcement? Are you under their flag? Are you under the flag, the democratic flag of the United States of America? It's time to answer questions, anarchists.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. So friends, before we have our next commenter, I just wanna remind everybody that we're not gonna be clapping or commenting on what other people say. You can do the hands. It just, it adds to the time that we have. And also, it makes people feel uncomfortable. Thank you. Mr. Harrison, welcome.
Councilman, Mayor, City Manager, ma'am. I'm not here to come here to be mean to anybody, and I don't hate anybody, but I've been coming here for six years answering, asking questions, which none of them ever get answered. And I know I can ask them now, you don't answer questions, but I've been on the mayor's page, asking many questions, and just been ignored for months. And this drag queen crap with you guys indoctrinating children with these drag queen shows has got to end. Who wants to bring a Satan-worshipping drag queen to a school? Mayor of Eureka, is that a good idea for Storytime Hour? I don't know what you're winking for. Look on Tyler Port's podcast where you said it. You wanna bring the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence to the school. That is sickening, disgusting, and unacceptable. Moving on to Hatcher, a drug exchange caught selling drugs over three years ago to this community while you babysit it across from City Hall, where a lawyer just caught selling seven ounces of fentanyl. What the hell? Why is Hatcher even allowed to be operated in here when they've been caught selling drugs, swept under the rug three years ago? Unacceptable. You want terrorism in Eureka? Have you drove through Eureka? It's a scumhole. People lying on the sidewalk doing the jiggle. I come into town yesterday, this guy doing the jiggle over by O'Reilly's. You think tourists wanna come through here and see a zombie wasteland? And as far as the mayor's page, there ain't nothing on there to help the city. All there is is ad campaigns. Six Rivers Brewery, go to have a beer, go over here and have a cocktail. We need real leadership. This place needs to be made safer and cleaner. It's a garbage pit. If I was a mayor, I'd be proud to stand up and do something about it, but you guys do nothing. And as far as the drag queen show goes, all of you guys are in compliance. Every one of you are groomers, every one of you, because you sit there while the mayor says, "Mic drop." I'll take the child to a drag queen show all day, every day, no matter how old it is, no matter what they're doing. Twerking their ass in a child's face? You guys are all on board with that, and you are being watched. You will be held accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
My name's Graham.
Oh, James Graham. Why'd I call you Mr. Harrison? I don't know. I got you confused.
Thank you for scratching the surface. Thank you for exposing the corruption of the local council. I've been an early victim of political violence. I came to my shop many years ago, it said, "Fascist pig, fuck you." I hate to bring those language up. And fascist pig, go home. And I couldn't get it prosecuted by the EPD at that time, because they said, "Go home." But it didn't say fascist German pig, go home. So, and I had the Hatcher goons coming after me. I've been death-threatening. Two days ago was the third anniversary of the passing of my stepfather, and that reminded me that on the deathbed of my stepfather dying at the VA Hospital in San Francisco, as a seven-years Navy veteran that he served for our country, that I got death-threatened that very same day. I got death-threatened by Hatcher goons calling me exactly in that hallway, and Steve Watson was right next to it. So the filth, the underbelly, that we allow the neo-progressive leftist agenda to fester here in this community is totally out of hand. We had a so-called militant harm reductionist, and that was Brandy Wilson, running Hatcher. Hatcher distributed by now millions of needles, an unsolved environmental catastrophe for which we do not have a solution. No way around it. I just talked to a friend of mine who owns a construction company. He says he's preparing, he's looking into getting a class-action lawsuit with other construction companies going, because all of his employees live in daily fear of the stinking needles they find all day long. I hear that also from EPD officers, that the greatest risk that they face are the needles. This is not, I don't pull that out of my buttock. I do this thing for many, many years by now, and nothing has been done. Those that speak out get prosecuted, persecuted, nailed to the wall, nailed to the cross, put into Los Cores outpost, being called harassers, for asking our political officials to take some freaking accountability and to be transparent, accountable, and responsible. And that's the only tar we need from our self-elected, selected officials in the face of an opioid crisis, a national opioid crisis. Look what's going on down at the border, shipping the fentanyl in. But I understand all illegals are welcome, right? So you support the shipping in of fentanyl into our community? You're the last city council member that is in open support of Hatcher. You are ruthless. You called me a hate monger a couple of years ago on public television during your election campaign. You are ruthless, agenda-driven, hardcore anti-for supporting. And by the way, you are part of a member of an organization called Artists Destroying Capitalism. You have no business sitting and serving in a public office, young lady. You do not have any business. Artists destroying capitalism? Go shove it and get out of office. Shame on all of you. You all should be recalled. We need an interim council, and we need a new mayor. You've been corrupt for eight years and a political failure without any, any, not one political achievement to show off. Think about it. You're gonna get yours.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. Delightful evening. Welcome.
Good evening. I was happy to hear Scott Bauer describe old people as part of the diversity that this community is so proud of, cuz I was so tired of being denigrated for being called an old white man, that it's nice to know that now I'm part of the diversity, and maybe I could start reaping some of the perks of that, reparations or something, I don't know. But anyway, beyond that, I just came from the hospital, got my little visitor's thing here, where my wife is for the 30th time since taking your vaunted vac shot a year and a half ago. It's getting old. But beyond that, she'll be fine this time. Her 29th trip, which occurred Saturday night, is when she had just gotten home from her 28th trip and was in such pain that when someone offered her some fentanyl, she took it. I found her dead on the bathroom floor, with her face gray, her lips blue, her eyes fixed and dilated, no breath, no pulse, with a foil with fentanyl in her hand and a straw. Fortunately, I was able to get her eyes to flutter. I have to say, I told Chief Darvins, I don't believe the officer that showed up was human. He got there in inhumanly fast time. Hit her with a Narcon. We got her back to life. She made it. The problem with it is, is that the officer that hit her with the Narcan told me, I asked him, I says, "Aren't you guys tired of having to do this all the time?" You know, you guys, you know, it happens on a regular basis. And he said that even if I came up with the name, there wasn't a whole lot they could do, because it's not, he doesn't feel like it's a priority for the city to go after these people. And I think you all need to step back from your climate goals and your glorifying drag queens, and you need to start focusing on what's happening in this community. I think it's ironic that I'm not the first speaker tonight to speak about this. Okay, I found my wife dead on the bathroom floor because of the fentanyl that you guys are encouraging and condoning and supporting. And you can't say anything about it, because, oh, that's racist to mention where it's coming from. Something needs to be done about it. It was my wife that was dead on the bathroom floor Saturday night because of your guys' encouragement and condoning of the whole damn thing. You need to do something about it. We don't care about climate agendas. We don't care about drag queens for kids. We care about the people we find dead on our floors, from the scourge that you're allowing in our community. Excuse me, I have a hospital to get back to.
Thank you, Stephen. Welcome, Mr. Wilcox.
It's Harry.
I can call you Harry? Awesome. Welcome, Harry.
There's so many issues I could hit on tonight, but the one that I really wanna hit on is the mental health issues in this community. You wanna see a perfect example of mental health issues? How about eight years of year after year after year after year of addressing this council and getting nothing? That's the designated meaning of insanity. Doing the same thing and expecting, you know, results and getting nothing. You've got to change your approach to this situation. I was at the council little meeting that you had, Mayor, and I brought up some good ideas. And there were some good ideas brought up, but once again, it was just lip service. Where is the action? It doesn't take 90 days to do something. It doesn't take 100 days to do something. It takes me walking up to one person and reaching out and saying, "We can help." But that doesn't seem to be what's happening. Like I said, to ignore what's going on, to think people wanna be homeless, that's insanity. That's mental illness. I know, 40 years as a junkie, 18 years clean and sober. I was homeless in New York City during the winter for 18 months. That was insane. And I got help, thank God, and my own will. But somebody had to reach out. And if we don't reach out, everything's gonna continue. You people are so into the Green New Deal and, you know, drag queens and everything. Meanwhile, there are people literally dying out there in the green spaces and bus stops, and what are we doing? Talking, constantly talking. Well, talking doesn't feed the bulldog. We've gotta start action. We've gotta get out there in one-on-one. Every day, my butt with my bad legs are down in Cooper's Gulch. I know 51 people down there that the police don't know, because they run from the police. They're afraid of them, that they're going to be beaten up, you know, whatever. Yet, that's another reason I grew the beard, because they feel comfortable with me. Because I talk to them, I'm their level. I don't threaten them. I try to work them. And thank God, I know the three people that have gone to services. And if I can do it as one person, you people can do it as a group.
Thank you, Harry. Welcome. We haven't seen you in a while. Nice to see you.
I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and the city council, when are you going to find a home for the transients that have taken over the downtown and Old Town business districts? My building, the Abraxas Store, was broken into for the fifth time over the past two years despite a security alarm and front gate. The cost to me over these past two years for broken glass has been $31,000 out of my own pocket because of my large deductible to keep my insurance rate low. If you go up and down Fourth and Fifth Streets, all you see are metal gates to keep out the transients. The amount of money that the renters and landlords have to pay is astronomical just to keep their businesses safe. Why isn't the City of Eureka doing anything to help the business people? The only time anything is cleaned up is when a cruise ship comes to port. That tells me that you know how bad everything really is. The mayor could do policies and directives to counter the vandalism and crime that has taken over Eureka. She could declare downtown and Old Town historical districts where loitering and occupying business entries is illegal under this type of zoning. Don't you want your city to be beautiful? Everyone I talk to believes that you don't care. Our city, if revitalized, could be a large draw for tourists. It could be something we could be proud of. You were voted into office to represent we, the people. Why do you want Eureka to look like San Francisco or Los Angeles? The transients that have been bussed into our community deserve a place to stay, and it's your responsibility to find them shelter. Many of them are a danger to the public. Are you waiting for someone to be killed before you act? How would you like it if you had a business in downtown or Old Town and you were constantly broken into and your customers harassed and threatened by the transient population? I'll guarantee you, you wouldn't. Part of your yearly budget is for safety for the public. Are you using it? I don't think so. We are short on officers. Is the police office, police department being defunded year by year? Absolutely. You need to increase safety to the citizens of Eureka, not take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on up. Welcome.
My name is Dawn Crowe, and I live in Fortuna. But all the people that I know would rather not come to Eureka because it is turned into an armpit. Have homeless people walking out in front of our vehicles when we drive through town? We have homeless people assaulting us when we come into Eureka. I was at In-N-Out Burger just two, three weeks ago. Had a homeless guy come up, asked me if I had extra change. I said, "No, I do not have any change." And he called me every name in the book, and not kind ones. I have lived here for 40-some-odd years in Humboldt County, and I have watched this area go down. You know, Manure Spreader comes to mind. It's crappy, and I would rather not have anything to do with Eureka. I don't wanna come up here and go shopping because of the area. And if I can't get it in Fortuna, and I can't get it online, I'll live without it. So, please, please support your police officers to do their job. That is what county, city, government should be doing. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
So, yeah. I came tonight to just say, "Hey, Mario, let's do better on getting the notice out about your town hall. I'm really excited about that." Ward 3, there's a lot of people that wanna look forward to, you know, having this town hall. I've been asking you, Kim, for a long time. I think it's really important. But, you know, hearing that you're giving money to the Area Aging Foundation, and they're doing direct mailings, like, what the hell? Like, those direct mailings need to go to your constituents if you're having a meeting. We're important, and I don't wanna feel important. I don't feel real important right now, especially this. This is beyond disturbing, council. And I hope to God you take every word serious, because the entire community is going to be reading this soon. If any of this is true, one sentence of it is true, we're living in hell.
Thanks, Patty. Is that available?
You've got it. It's on record.
Great, thank you.
Do your research. You'll see what's going on up here.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Hi, welcome.
Hi, guys. Jessica Repholz, business owner here in town. I'm only here today because I am really worried for our community. As many of you guys know, I grew up in Watts, in the Los Angeles area, really rough neighborhood. And more, I've been here 11 years, and every year that goes by, I now realize that I wanna relocate, because this is not where I wanna raise my kids. The one thing that I don't miss from LA is gates, fences, trash, litter, homeless people in every corner. And unfortunately, the more and more and more that I look around, that is what Eureka is becoming. My business is down the street on Summer Street, right next to the new beautiful building, sorry, for Food for People that's being built. And it really tore my heart down when I saw a huge fence with the claws pointing out, meaning we're keeping people out. This whole, everybody that sits up here talks about inclusivity. How are we including people by building more fences? But you know why people are building more fences around their business, even though I refuse to do that? Even, Kim, you said, "Hey, make friends with the people who are sleeping underneath your patio and have them take care of the..." What? Is that, like, you know? Is that really how we wanna encourage us to open more businesses here, to tell us to make friends with the bum that's sleeping underneath our thing, that pees and poops there, and that I have to come and clean in the mornings? And I don't even call EPD anymore, because I know they're understaffed and super busy. So I just take care of it myself, but that's gross. I don't wanna do that every day as a business owner. So just please, help us make Eureka a better place.
Thanks for being here, Jessica. Anyone else from the audience who'd care to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go over to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? See anybody?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Okay.
Okay, we have.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Hi, Paul.
I was born and raised here in Eureka. I've moved away a couple times, and I always move back. I love this town, I love this community, this county. But it's hard to love it anymore. Because I've seen so much go on, just like everyone else here has said. Up the crime, drugs, homeless. And it's really heartbreaking to me to see this happening. And it does, it's not getting better. It's getting worse and worse. And I'm kind of, I'm kind of the kind of guy that bleeds in tough love. People should earn their way in life. And I understand we have a lot of mental, people with disabilities and stuff. And it's a tough, it's not an easy fix. But the one thing I want to say is, I ran up and down that bay when I was a kid, every day. I love that bay. I fished there so much. You know, I ran under Patty's business. And last year, I basically lived on their dock fishing. And it's a tragedy for me to see some of the things that go on down in Old Town. One of my biggest concerns is open space. I would love to see a hard stance on keeping open space on the waterfront. And, I don't know, I heard a rumor about maybe some affordable housing be built on the waterfront. I don't really know what's going on with that. But I pray to God that doesn't happen. We do need some housing, but I think that's not the place. That's a beautiful waterfront. It should be used for the whole community and for the, for Humboldt Bay. It's a very valuable resource. One of the things I thought is, why can't they use the old Jacob site? There's a big old Jacob site out there that would be great for building some homeless housing. You know, it's on the bus lines, as close as shopping. And I think would be a much more valuable place to use it. And one more thing. I drove down to the waterfront today and noticed that part of the Howerson Park was mowed. And I'm sure it was mowed because the Canadian Sculpture Race is going to be there next weekend, the weekend after this. And as many of you know, I am part of the Humboldt Kiteers, and we are putting on the biggest, best kite festival this year on the waterfront. And the fields that we use there aren't mowed, and the grass is really really high.
Thank you, Paul. Your time is up. Paul, thanks for sharing. Enjoy the festival. It's going to be amazing. You, too.
Know our field.
Do you see anyone else?
Seeing no one else for public comment.
Seeing no one else for public comment, we'll bring it back. Again, thank you all for your comments. And we'll move into public hearings. E1. There you are, Ms. Prasker. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robin Prasker with the Community Services Department. And tonight, we are bringing to special assessments related to unpaid garbage and recycling collection fees. The mandatory garbage and recycling collection ordinance states that the owner of any improved property in or from which solid waste and recyclable materials are created, accumulated, or produced is responsible for subscribing to a collection service. It is the property owner's responsibility, not the tenant, to secure and maintain the collection services. The delinquent account section of the ordinance states-
Excuse me, Robin. Could someone please close the doors? Appreciate that. One moment. Poligize. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Carry on.
Sure. The delinquent account section of the ordinance states that the city shall attempt to collect the delinquent fees in the manner described in the California Government Code, Section 25831, which establishes the procedure to record a lien or special assessment against a property. In conformance with this government code, all delinquent accounts brought to you tonight are from the year 2022 and have been unpaid for a period of sixty days or more after the date upon which they were billed. And all property owners were sent a final notice on April 21st of this year, which was not less than ten days prior to the date of this hearing. It is the policy of the city to seek voluntary and timely compliance with the provisions of this ordinance to provide an effective means of enforcement if such compliance is not obtained, and to set forth the procedures for the collection of fees if they are not paid voluntarily. Noticing to property owners about delinquent accounts was not limited to the final noticing sent in April of this year. The city's franchise hauler, Recology, notified property owners of delinquent accounts in April, August, and November of last year and March of this year. And Recology also sent letters to each month, each month, to the owners with closed accounts so they would have time to contact previous tenants. As of May 10th, the report attached has four hundred and twenty-three properties. Staff has received forty-six returned final notices. So those property owners who did not receive the final notice in the mail are not included in the report to you here tonight, nor the report that will go to the county auditor. As always, staff and Recology have been extremely accommodating with responsible property owners, interested in avoiding the special assessment process, and continue to work with property owners who have made an effort to resolve the unpaid balances. So, for the property owners that have received the final notification but have yet to pay, they still have twenty days from today's hearing to make arrangements for payment. And property owners that do so will be afforded the same accommodations as the previous property owners who settled the accounts. So, with that, staff recommends council hold a public hearing to hear any objections or protests, make adjustments as deemed just, and adopt a resolution of the city council providing for the collection of the fees. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Prasker? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up this public hearing. Is there anyone here today to comment on this item in the room? Okay, seeing no one. Is there anyone on Zoom that needs, or that would like to comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We'll bring it back to council for discussion, comments, and a motion. Oh, I'm going to close the public hearing, excuse me. Close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments, et cetera, et cetera. Councilmember Bauer.
I'll make a motion to hold the public hearing to hear any objections or protests and make adjustment as deemed just and adopt a resolution of the city council providing for collection of fees.
A second?
Great, so we have a motion and a second? Please vote. It's not showing.
Roll call vote? Oh, we have one. Here we go. Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, that request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. So I haven't heard anything? Oh.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, so I don't think that anything will be pulled this evening. So, councilmember Fernandez.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Great. Motion and a second? Please vote.
Oh, oh, wait. Oh! Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. So, does anyone have any legislative action correspondence? Councilmember Bauer?
One second here. Well, I'll just say, I, part of my council report, I attended some city, Cal cities meetings, and a couple of things came up. There is AB 84. It's a property tax, welfare exemption, affordable housing. And I could read the whole description here. Maybe it's better to come back. But basically, it's supposed to provide a tax incentive, but it hinders our ability to make those decisions on, like, when it's appropriate. And it kind of gives some loopholes for developers that it won't necessarily lead to affordable housing. So maybe we'll have a discussion about it next time. But the general consensus among, among our friends in other cities is to oppose it. And so I can, we can either read it now, or we can talk about it, or you can look at it yourselves. And what's the best way to approach that?
I would defer to the city attorney?
Yeah.
So our practice over the last few months has been for the council to say, you know, yes, please bring it back. And then I will go and do some research and bring a letter, you know, likely from the proponent of the bill. And then you guys can vote on whether or not to send the letter. If that works, then I'm happy to continue that practice. If it doesn't work, then I'm happy to entertain another practice.
So as a point of order, Assistant City Manager Powell, do we bring this item, as far as bringing it back for discussion? Would this be brought up more in council reports? Or can we do this here now where we're at?
I believe if you knew a lot about the item and say you all had, it was more well-known, you could actually, under this particular section of the agenda, direct staff to send a letter to oppose or support. It sounds like this particular AB 84 needs a little more clarification and discussion. And so I think the, it would be, need to come back. And then we can put it either on consent or on reports, and you can have a discussion regarding it and how you would like to direct the letter.
So the question I have, thank you for that. The question I have is, does he, does a council member bring a legislative item? Do we bring it forward now for thumbs up? Or do we bring it forward during council reports as we would any other item?
It's been our practice to do legislative items under this section.
Thank you. So we're looking for general consensus.
I just wanted to add, excuse me, mayor. Yeah, typically, what this is used for is if there's an urgency. The reason why we put this as a standing item is because sometimes legislation comes up that needs to be acted upon much quicker than we can typically do with our noticing and those type of things. But I think, as Assistant City Manager Powell said, you know, this could be brought up as a future agenda item under council reports if it doesn't need to be acted on right away.
So it needs to be brought up now or under council?
I think it can be either or. It doesn't have to be either one. I'm just giving you the background as to why we have the standing item. It's because typically, it was because we had instances where council member wanted to support or oppose certain legislation, and because of the timing of it, it wasn't able to be acted upon because we couldn't meet our guidelines.
Clarified. Thank you so much.
And this one's in the Appropriations Committee, so it is steaming along. But I think if we could discuss it in next meeting, we'd be okay.
No problem.
Okay, so do we have a consensus that we'd like to hear more about this?
That we're talking about.
Great. So I see all thumbs up.
Just one more. And this one is a Cal City-sponsored bill, AB 972, a local assistance and grant program streamlining workshop. Basically, just makes it easier. Every community has the same opportunity to compete for state funding opportunities. So, you know, small cities have a better, as good a chance as large cities when it comes to receiving grants. It's a, we're sponsoring it as an organization. I think that one would be worth, if we could get a letter to go soon, I think it'd be advantageous to us. You know, it's one of our bills, so. That one, like to expedite if possible.
So, I don't know.
What's the council's pleasure on this? I'm happy to do it either way.
I don't know.
Was that enough information for council?
I'm comfortable, oh, Peter, I'm comfortable going on the recommendation of Councilmember Bauer. He is more, he is our representative and is involved in this process.
Great. Okay, so what is our pleasure?
So-
Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up, please.
City Attorney Luna will draft a letter and bring it to the mayor for signature.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other legislative action we would like to bring forward? Councilmember Castellano?
Since for all them, I could have brought it up in the other section. I, you know, I think it could come back at a next meeting. But AB 812 is an assembly bill that could directly benefit the city of Eureka in that it allows for kind of expansion of housing options for affordable housing developments in cultural arts districts that a city could choose if they wanted. They wouldn't be mandated to choose this. But to include up to 10% artist housing as part of affordable developments in designated cultural arts districts. So that's, that's the bill. I think, you know, I don't think it's particularly urgent, but if council is interested in taking a look at it, we could bring it back.
Okay. So it looks like we have all thumbs up.
Okay, so it looks like AB 84 and AB 812 will come back next meeting for a discussion. And AB 972 will send a letter of support immediately.
Thank you, City Attorney Luna.
You're welcome, there.
You are appreciated. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Bill number 1027-CS, Bond of Appeals, Chief Building Official Riley. Welcome.
Just go right here. Folder. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Brendan Riley, the chief building official. And I'd like to introduce some changes to Section 150.029 of the Eureka Municipal Code that has to do with the Board of Appeals. If anybody doesn't know what the Board of Appeals does, they hear appeals on actions from either the building or fire official. They make determinations on alternative methods of construction or alternative materials. And then every three years, they recommend that we adopt the California Building Code. And then what, one thing they cannot do is waive any requirements of the building code. We have two proposed changes. The first, the board currently consists of seven members, and staff would like to pare this down to five. We, we currently have six. We've been trying to fill the last position for quite some time and aren't having much luck, and we're about to have two more retire. I think I found one more person that's willing to be on, so that'll bring us up to the new five, but the chances of, of picking up another two, I think are slight. And if the passage is any indicator, I think we'd be good at five. Also, the model California Building Code recommends a five-member board, so we would be in line with what many other jurisdictions are doing. And then the second change we'd like to make is we want to add some clarifying language to the ordinance that lays out the steps of the appeals process, timelines for applications, hearings, and final determinations. For some reason, it wasn't in there before, but I think we just want to have it somewhere so people, if they want to take a look at it, it's right there laid out. And as my presentations usually are, short and sweet, that's it.
Was there any historical purpose for why we were at seven?
I'm not sure. I couldn't find anything. It's just kind of always been, I think.
Yeah, it seems like such an odd number to begin with, and I know that there are few school districts, few and far between, that have something similar, but just curious if there was any purpose for it.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of it or that I could find.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll bring it out, or open up the public comment. Is anyone here to comment on this item? Anyone on Zoom? Do you see anybody?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Of the city clerk. It looks to me like this is a complete repeal and replace of this ordinance. Is that how we're going to move forward on it instead of, I don't see any amendments per se, it's more like a gut and amend. I just want to make sure.
So a repeal and replace?
Yes. So instead of the hereby amended to read, we'll say hereby repealed and replaced?
Did you do strike out on that?
No. Not in the agenda.
Yeah, it's, just in the actual.
Yeah. So any motion will just say, move to adopt as?
It's introduced.
Introduced, sorry. Move to introduce. Repeal and replace, not amended. One simple change.
Thank you. Okay. Who would care to make the motion tonight? Councilmember Costellano?
I'll make a motion to, I didn't, I think, I think I can do this. Way of reading and re-read my title only, I move to introduce bill number 1027CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.029 pertaining to the Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you.
So reports and action items, we'll be discussing regional climate action plan update with Development Services Director Kenyon.
Good evening. So we were asked to bring a brief update on the development of the Regional Climate Action Plan, also known as the CAP. And the purpose of the plan is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions countywide with a goal of 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. The effort is being led by county staff and RCEA with the participation of all Humboldt, seven Humboldt counties cities. Timeline to date, the idea of the Regional CAP began being discussed amongst the county jurisdictions in 2018, and then in 2019, the cities and counties adopted an MOU committing to CAP development. In April of 2021, the county released an admin draft of the CAP to city staff of the seven jurisdictions for an opportunity to edit and comment. And then there was some delay, and a draft of the CAP was made public in April of 2022 for a 45-day comment period. And the cities and the counties brought it to their respective boards and committees and commissions and councils. And it's still available on the county's website. They have a page about the climate action plan. That's where you would go to learn about it and read the document, the draft document. And I brought the draft document to city council in May of 2022, so a year ago is the last time we discussed this. And the county Board of Supervisors heard it, talked about the draft on June 7th of 2022. And then, right after that, there was a lot of activity. The county secured $150,000 in funding from the Humboldt County Association of Governments through a sub-allocation of their REAP grant that they got from the state to do the necessary SEQA environmental impact report for the CAP. And the county released an RFP, and they selected a consultant for the EIR development. And then due to county staffing shortages, there was delay, and it wasn't until February of this year that the county finally signed the contract with the consultant and agreed to a schedule for the EIR development. So according to that schedule, the notice of preparation for the EIR will be released in mid-June. And for a public review period, this is when the public has an opportunity to weigh in on the scope and content of the environmental information to be included in the draft EIR. And at this point, city staff will, plans to bring it back to the council and other relevant city committees and commissions to get input. Then there's, the schedule currently has it that the draft of the EIR will become publicly available at the end of November of this year, and there will be a 45-day public review and comment period on the draft document. Again, we'll bring it back to council and get public input. And the hope is, oh yeah, then between January and April, the schedule has the county preparing the final EIR and responding to the public comments they received with the hope of a final EIR and adopted CAP in 2024, adopted by all the cities in the county, including us. And then after the CAP's adopted, the consultant is also going to be working on this handy checklist that we will use for future projects and to check if they are, during the SEQA review, one part of SEQA is analyzing the greenhouse gas emissions impacts of projects, and now we'll have this handy checklist, and if you're consistent with the CAP, you're done with your greenhouse gas emission analysis, and that will save large projects thousands of dollars, once we have that. Also, there's $35,000 of HCOG's REAP funding that's set aside for a CAP coordinator, but unfortunately, that funding needs to be spent by May of 2024, which is just a month after planned adoption of the CAP, so there won't be that much time for the CAP coordinator to implement. So the CAP Working Group is thinking that the CAP coordinator will actually help with outreach during the adoption process and EIR development process. And then I just wanted to mention that the CAP has a lot of different measures, but in terms of the quantified greenhouse gas reduction measures, it's relying heavily on electrification of vehicles and buildings. Over 75% of the quantified reductions come from, from those things. And, whoops, yeah, 29% from, this is countywide, from electrification of existing buildings, and 38.7% from electrification of passenger vehicles. And so this brings up PG&E capacity issues. In September of 2022, news really started to come out about the inability of PG&E to hook up new people in, in projects in Southern Humboldt, and really, we learned that this is a much broader state, you know, it's an issue across the state. And the, the CAP Working Group, so the staff from the various cities in the county, had a lot of conversations about how this affects the CAP, and we ultimately think it's still a good idea to, to continue with the CAP. Because this is a statewide issue, there's hope that, you know, the state and others will put pressure on PG&E to address these capacity issues. We, city council adopted, or signed a advocacy letter at their last meeting from RCEA. If not, then places like Rio Del and Garberville, and, so unincorporated county and Fortuna and Rio Del, they're going to have to retool their implementation measures, and will have to potentially amend the EIR as we go forward. But as we, it is our understanding that the city of Eureka has the capacity necessary, so we can implement our, you know, sub-targets and implementation measures of the CAP, and we believe we can still receive that SEQA streamlining benefit from the CAP, even if other jurisdictions are unable to achieve their sub-targets. So that's my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Could you explain that SEQA streamlining to me? How that works?
Yes, so right now, it's a section of SEQA, you have to, if you're, if you're preparing a SEQA document, you have to analyze the greenhouse gas emission impacts of your project. And if they're significant, then you have to, then, you know, you might propose mitigation measures, but there's no, we haven't developed a consistent methodology for doing that, so you would pay a consultant, likely thousands of dollars to do an analysis for you. But now there's going to be this checklist that asks you questions about your project. There's a draft example that's online as part of the CAP documents you can take a look at. And if you're consistent with, if your, if your project is consistent with the CAP, then you wouldn't have to do any further greenhouse gas emissions analysis, and you could say that your impacts weren't going to be significant and move on and not have to do your own individual analysis.
Councilmember Bauer?
I just want to thank you for the report, and I brought it up because the speed of, of, of what, the things we do, you know, affect how we respond to this emergency, essentially. And for us to all understand it, you know, I, I know there's nothing we can do to speed it up, it's really in the county's hands, but I know that we're, we're already doing things, you know, as far as addressing climate change, and so is RCEA, and so is the county for that matter, but I'm just frustrated by how glacial, and no pun intended, things are moving in this particular arena, because I think there were some comments about why are we worried about it? Well, because it's civilization we're worried about, you know, but thank you for the update. Look forward to seeing it finally get done.
Any further questions? Okay, so we will open this up to, even though this is a report, we will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Deborah Duke. I'm Deborah Dukes, and this is the first time that I have been at a city council meeting in person since before COVID. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service, for the way you can sit there so stoically, and I apologize on behalf of so many of my fellow citizens who think ad hominem attacks are the way to go. Regarding this, this is incidental, I am not here as a representative of the Eureka Energy Committee, however, Kristin Kenyon presented to us about a year ago on this, and I too am frustrated with the speed or lack thereof. I wanted to thank you very, very much for this report, it's helpful. I also wanted to call attention to your policies and procedures, environmentally preferable procurement policy, adopted September 1st, 2015. And I'm going to continue to report on this, I may be as persistent as some other public commenters. I'm going to continue to call your attention to this as I see items that need to be addressed, one of which has to do, I don't know, is there going to be public comment after the fleet report? I'll come back.
Oh, no, it's, no.
It's a city manager report.
It's a city, okay.
But we will be having a much more in-depth discussion about fleet electrification after, this is just going to be a brief overview of regulations that are upcoming, but there'll be a more detailed explanation from our Deputy Public Works Director coming in the near future, and that would go to the Energy Commission before it came to council.
We're only a committee, but thank you. Someday, we hope to get up there with the big boys, but in the meantime. Anyway, I wanted to thank you very much for that and encourage all of you who recognize the importance of addressing climate change or the climate crisis. Some of us are working really, really hard on it, and it's reassuring to see you doing it, especially when perhaps you're not getting all the support you might want. So thank you again for your willingness to serve, and thank you, we really appreciated that presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so bringing it back, is there any comment after public comment? No. Glad to know that. Okay. Councilmember Costellano?
I mean, thank you for the report. You know, I am, you know, yes. Also, of course, it, it always seems like we can't do these things fast enough, and so, you know, I do appreciate that within the city, we can move forward on enacting policies even while this is, you know, we're waiting for this. So, you know, I do, I know that came up as a theme in our strategic visioning, and, you know, I, I look forward to, you know, the city of Eureka kind of leading the pack when it comes to bringing forward environmentally appropriate policies.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, solar renewable energy improvements, Public Works Director Gerving?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have all kinds of energy-related topics tonight, and this is one of them. Ordinarily, something like this, a staff recommendation for rejection of bids would be something that would go on the consent calendar, but Councilmember Bauer's request at the last meeting was timely. He asked for an update on the solar photovoltaic installation project at the reservoir, and we had just opened bids a few days before. At the time, we were in the process of analyzing those bids that we received, and, and we're here before you tonight, unfortunately, with a recommendation to reject those bids. Just a little bit of background on this project and how we got to where we are. Quite some time ago, in 2021, staff from the city and from Redwood Coast Energy Authority came before council and presented a suite of potential solar photovoltaic projects that could be funded through loans from the California Energy Commission. And the first of those projects that was recommended to move forward was a, a couple of them associated with one another at the reservoir, the 20 million gallon reservoir across from Sequoia Park, and another smaller project at the High Tank Facility. Staff secured that loan from the Energy Commission in February of 2022. Staff secured that loan from the Energy Commission in February of two thousand and twenty-two, and then went to work looking at what our procurement options were. At first, there was a thought that maybe a design-build procurement process might work better than a typical design-bid-build process. In the end, that turned out not to be the most feasible option. So we went ahead and proceeded with the design of these pretty significant solar PV projects, along with completing a lighting retrofit at the water treatment plant that was necessary to reduce the load just a little bit to help increase the, the payback, the viability of the project. So we started that design in November of two thousand and twenty-two and went out to bid in March, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three is when we advertised the project, opened the bids a month later on April twenty-seventh. The base bid for just the water treatment plant project was one point two million dollars. That was the engineer's estimate. That's what we had available from the Energy Commission loan. Unfortunately, the lowest bid came in at one point three five million, so about a hundred fifty thousand dollars more than the funding that was available. The additive alternate that we had for the high tank system had an even greater variation. In that case, the, the available funding was a hundred ninety-five thousand, and the low bid was three hundred fifty. So from a percentage standpoint, quite a, quite a difference. When you're talking about grant funding, oftentimes, there's the ability to go back and ask the granting entity for more funding to make the project whole. But with the way this project is funded in Energy Commission loan, there's quite a detailed analysis that preceded the loan approval that looked at energy usage at the site, about, at the cost of the improvements, the electricity that would be generated, and the resulting savings and payback period. And there's a cutoff in the payback period beyond which the Energy Commission would not fund the loan. And unfortunately, the water treatment plant is right there at the limit of what could be funded with the loan, with the savings and payback period as originally calculated. So we're not eligible for more funding. So instead, with this recommendation to reject the bids, what we instead are recommending is that council direct us to go back and look at maybe procuring some of the materials for the project directly, so that we're not paying markup. Look at how we can value engineer the project a little bit. Some of the hardware was, you know, in one bidder's opinion, cost prohibitive, and really jacked up the price of the project. So look at how we can save some costs, procure some of the materials on our own, and then rebid the project in a different configuration. Still want to make it happen. It's still an impressive project with the size of the system that would be on top of the reservoir roof. But right now, we're here before you rejecting or recommending the rejection of bids. And if you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Great. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Bauer?
I know it is disappointing, but I'll just say that the Sandrini project that we've been working on for RCA, which is a massive solar field that would account for a lot of our renewables in the county, it's been, I think, five years or something, we can't get the solar panels off the boat, you know. So like, things are hard in this arena, cost, requirements that they be done, panels be built, you have to be certified that they're not built with slave laborers, all these really incredible, important things that are limiting our ability, you know. So I, I'm sad, but I, I understand, and I hope we'll push forward, you know.
I hope so, too.
Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Okay.
Sorry, no.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fernandez?
I always appreciate when we're able to do what we can in-house. I guess my concern with rejecting these would be, and, and, and like, take your recommendation, because I likely will unless something else comes up. My concern, of course, is the costs. As, as we go a little further into the future, we saw what happened, I think it was with the water tank storage. And so how are we preparing for, for that potential if costs become exorbitant?
Yeah, well, hopefully that won't be the case. Obviously, construction costs have been escalating with all of our projects. But, you know, we're, we're expecting that, demand was actually really heavy for solar leading up to this change to net metering three point oh, and there's at least some chance that it could, that demand could moderate somewhat now that a lot of those projects are in the pipeline. But we really do feel like being able to procure those materials on, on the city's behalf, you know, directly and not pay markup could represent a significant cost savings that would more than compensate for any additional escalation we see between now and we're able and when we're able to bid the project again. That being said, we're looking to turn it around pretty quickly and, and get it out, you know, before the end of the summer, so that we can keep moving on the project.
Okay, so that was going to be my follow-up, was what was the timeline we're looking at? And I think you just answered it, so thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no other questions from council, we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none in-house, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see none.
Great, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second. Councilmember Costellano?
Okay, sure. Thanks for the update and the report. Let's see, I make a motion to reject all bids for the solar renewable energy improvements project, bid number two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen, and redesign the scope of the project to be in accordance with the grant funding available.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we'll have the proposed budget introduction, Finance Director Malar.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's report is about the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. So this is the first of multiple budget reports. So tonight, we will look at the city's major funds, both the revenues and expenditures by category. We will look at CIP projects by fund. And then at the end, I will show you where you can find the two thousand and twenty-three, proposed budget. And then we will need to schedule the first budget study session. So the reason I started with the major funds in the CIP projects was because when you look at these expenditures, they represent about seventy-one million dollars. And, but they represent actual cash transactions. So because the city has many different funds, and those funds have transactions between each other, a lot of times you get, or you're essentially doubling expenses. There's nothing wrong with that, that's just how the budget is organized. So what I've done was I've isolated the true expenses, the ones that actually send money out of our bank account. And these represent about ninety-six percent of those true expenses. So the health of these major funds really reflects the health of the city's finances. So it's really important when we look at the budget is to look at the, these funds and if they're balanced, if they're in a deficit position, or if they have surpluses, because those have large effects on the city's reserves. So I'll begin with the first section, revenues and expenditures by fund. We're going to start with the water fund, Fund five hundred. So looking at revenues, we have two categories of revenues in the water fund. This first category, the major category, is charges for services. We anticipate charges for services to go up by about twenty-six percent. That is because in late two thousand and twenty-two, we adopted a new water sewer rate study. That rate study implemented increases in January, and there will be another round of increases in July. Due to those increases, we're seeing a large increase in revenues. This next category, miscellaneous, what that is, is monies from the American Rescue Plan or ARPA. We dedicated some of our ARPA monies to utility projects. So that's kind of a one-and-done revenue stream. But even so, if you look at the bottom line, we're still up by nine percent. When we're looking at expenditures in the water fund, we'll start with personnel. So personnel costs are increasing about fourteen percent. When you look at personnel crop, personnel costs citywide, you see about a six percent increase. The main driver of that increase are the cost of living adjustments. But in this fund, we have two factors. We have a small increase in personnel FTEs, and we have the COLAs. So it is growing at a higher-than-average rate. The next category, outside services. It's a relatively small increase, but it's, what's driving this increase is a thirty-thousand dollar request from water treatment to increase spending for consulting services and an increase in PG&E charges, so gas and electric. Capital outlay, this is going in the other direction. So in the current fiscal year, the water fund requested some large one-time payments for large equipment items. And then debt service, so in late two thousand and twenty-two, we refinanced some water and wastewater debt. That refinancing changed the debt service schedule, so that's the amount you pay every year. So that changed that schedule will result in savings in the long run, but for a couple years, we will see a few increases, and then that will start to go down in the future. And finally, transfers. So this category represents what's being transferred from the Water Operating Fund to the Water CIP Fund. So that two point four million is being dedicated to CIP projects. So overall, when we compare our revenues to expenditures, you can see in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a large deficit. But in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, we will have a surplus in the water fund, which is good news. But I would like to add that in the last rate study, we identified that the water fund had a lot of cash on hand, and we were able to reduce the amount of cash on hand and still have healthy reserves, and essentially reduce how much the rates went up in the last rate study. Next, we have the wastewater fund, Fund five-ten. In this fund, just like the water fund, two different categories, similar increases as the water fund due to the rate study, and then also some ARPA monies that will go away in the next fiscal year. On the purse, or the expenditure side, same story. A lot of times, personnel are funded out of both water and wastewater, and in some, in certain cases, we have people being charged to the general fund, water and wastewater. So you're seeing a small increase in FTEs and the effects of the COLAs. In materials and supplies, Sewer Collection has requested forty thousand dollars in additional spending for paving materials. They requested a hundred and twenty thousand for the sewer lateral program. And then Sewer Treatment increased their chemical budget by about seventy-five thousand dollars. A lot of these things are due to the effects of inflation. Next, we have the cost allocation. I'm just pointing this out because what this represents is the departments providing services to other departments. So this includes equipment operations, IT, finance, HR. So those expenses in their budgets come through the other department's budgets as the cost allocation. When your department increases the number of FTEs, you get a larger share of that cost allocation. So in this case, because their FTEs went up, they're going to see their cost allocation amounts go up as well. The good news is for the other departments, they actually see cost allocation grow at a lesser rate or even decrease when department, other departments grow in size. Capital outlay, again, in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a couple large expenditures for equipment. We won't see that again in two thousand and twenty-three. Transfers, this is going to wastewater CIP projects. We are just increasing the amount and size of project, of the projects in next, next year's budget. And then the bottom line, a small deficit in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, and then a nice surplus is proposed in two thousand and twenty-three. Next, we have the Harbor Fund, Fund five-thirty. We have three different revenue categories. The one that is increasing is charges for services. This is due to some CPI increases that are embedded in our contracts for our, the people that lease properties on the waterfront. We also have a new retail development on the waterfront that increased revenues. Other financing sources, what this is, is a subsidy coming from the general fund. So in a lot of ways, this decrease is good news. That means the general fund is spending less money to subsidize the Harbor Fund. Personnel increasing at about seven percent. Six percent was average, so not too bad. Outside services, this is mainly due to increases in PG&E charges. Capital outlay, Community Services is increasing their budget for furniture and some tools. So we had a balanced budget in this fiscal year, and we should expect one next fiscal year. So good news. Finally, we have the Building Fund. So the Building Fund is seeing revenues drop, but that's also good news, because that revenue source was coming from the general fund, so that subsidy is decreasing. On the expenditure side, the Building Department has a couple allocated FTEs that they are not going to recruit for next fiscal year, so they're seeing a drop in their personnel budget. And then their outside services line item for plan checking services has gone down by eighty-five percent. Or no, I'm sorry, eighty-five thousand dollars. So overall, we had a balanced budget this fiscal year, and we should expect one next fiscal year. But also, I'd like to point out that the expenditures went down by three hundred thousand dollars. So this is my new favorite department. I'm sorry, I almost forgot the general fund, Fund one-ten. So on the revenue side, we'll start with taxes. This is obviously the largest category. There are two stories going on here. We are increasing property tax revenues by four hundred thousand, and this is coming from what was the old redevelopment agency. As the redevelopment agencies pay off their obligations, we actually see more property tax come in. The bad news is that our most up-to-date projections from HDL, that's the consulting company that forecasts sales tax revenues, they have downgraded next year's sales tax revenue budget by one point one seven million dollars. That's unfortunate, but we did see a large increase during the pandemic. Things have cooled down a little bit. For intergovernmental revenues, this is, or revenues coming from other government agencies. I forgot to add a revenue for dispatch services. So the Humboldt Bay Fire JPA reimbursed us for a portion of our dispatch team. That was about a hundred thousand dollars. And then I've changed the way that I've budgeted for a lease payment that we make for a fire engine. So in the past- So in the past, I typically just adjusted the budget in mid-year. Um, because it's a, it's an odd scenario or situation where we have a CIP fund for the Fire JPA and they hold on to the monies. So what I'm doing in this budget is I'm saying that I'm going to budget for that lease payment or that debt service payment. So I have a new budget line item, but I'm also going to budget for the revenue or the reimbursement that the JPA will provide after I make that payment. Next, we have charges for services, uh this is going up. This is due to a change in the contract with the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation. Uh, we decided that instead of sharing the membership revenue, that we would provide a flat um fee or payment every fiscal year. So essentially, we're collecting more membership revenue, but it's getting net against that new expenditure. So even though we see an increase right here, uh you'll see uh the opposite effect on the expenditure side. And then miscellaneous revenues, uh these are just numerous line items that um, you know, there's a lot of them and they're slowly going up, a lot of them have to do with things or programs that got shut down during COVID. Now I'm starting to see those come back and the trends in the right direction, so that's uh good news. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh personnel costs up four percent, less, less than average. Uh, outside services, um this is made up of uh our payment to the Fire JPA, it's going up by about two hundred thousand dollars. And then also, where is that? Uh, about a hundred thousand dollars in increases to be PG and E um charges. And that makes up a lot of different line items. Uh, in this miscellaneous category, uh this is where I added that payment to the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation. And also a payment to our marketing services provider. Uh, they used to collect one dollar for every zoo admission that we sold. Uh, instead, we pay them a flat fee as well, so we did, I did increase zoo admission revenue by the same amount that the payment uh or the payment should be. Uh, that's that debt service payment for the fire engine. And then finally, transfers, so these are monies that go to uh pay for street improvements, uh building improvements. And also those subsidies to uh harbor and building. Uh, we did decrease the amount going to streets and facilities uh by about seven percent overall. Uh, that's okay, that's not gonna reduce what uh the projects in our street uh fund. So this year, we had a very healthy surplus and uh that was great news. Cuz what will happen with that extra revenue is that will increase our reserves. Um, I wish we still were showing that in uh this proposed budget. We're not, but uh at least it's balanced. And typically what happens is that we will have some salary savings. And uh typically, we end up better than what the budget projects. So I'm hoping that that surplus grows by uh a couple of hundred thousand dollars at the minimum. So next, uh the capital improvement program projects by fund. And these are new projects, projects that were not in the twenty two, twenty three budget. So Fund Two Twenty Six, we've dedicated this fund to non-motorized transportation projects. So we have two, we have the Bay to Zoo Trail, which added about a million uh in anticipated expenditures and then about three hundred thousand for the C Street Bike Boulevard. Uh, these projects are being paid for by grants. Next, we have Fund Two Forty, this is the road infrastructure or the streets fund. Uh, we have four projects totaling about three point seven million. Uh, the bunnies paying for these projects come from different sources, including the general fund for about two point four million. And then these three revenue sources coming essentially from the state, so we have HUTA, RMRA and RSTP. Uh, before Measure H, uh most of the HUTA and the RMRA was being used for operations. Uh, but we were able to move the personnel and the, you know, their budgets out of those funds and we put them back in the general fund, so all those monies are now available for capital projects. Uh, as you can see that we are only spending about three point seven, but we're gonna transfer over four million uh so that we start to build um cash in this fund so that we can do bigger projects in the future. Next, we have five or Fund Five Oh One, uh this is our Water CIP Fund. Uh, we have three projects for a total of two point four million. Uh, these projects come from or are paid for by the water fund. So when you, I showed you the water fund, I showed you that transfer line, it was two point four million, this is where it's going. Fund Five Twelve is dedicated to wastewater CIP projects. It's a long list of projects for a total of four point seven million. Uh, the wastewater is different because most of the money comes from the wastewater operations fund. But some of those projects, uh we split the cost with Humboldt Community Services District. So that concludes uh all the numbers I'll be showing you tonight. Um, but I think it really tells the story of the big picture. And even though we've seen our surplus shrink in the general fund, we have balanced budgets across the board. So there's no reason to think that by the end of next fiscal year, we will have any less cash in the bank, which is good, good news. Um, but uh, yeah, as you, let me go through the next part. Where could I find the budget? So we'll begin, you go to the city's webpage, it looks like this. You click on My Government, which is this link right here. Then you get another list, uh you'll click on Departments on the left, that's a dropdown menu. Uh, you could select Finance, after you click Finance, then you have another menu. And you'll click on Fin, or Financial Information and Reports. And finally, deep down in there, you'll find the proposed budget. So when you click that link, you'll see two documents, you'll see the main budget document, but you'll also see the line item document. The line item document is uh pretty straightforward, it lists out every line item in the budget, it's, it's what our departments use when they're looking at where they can spend their money. Um, that said, uh I encourage the digital version, but uh if you would like a hard copy, uh I can have one made for you by the end of day tomorrow, so if we can pause for a minute and if if anyone would like a hard copy, I would be happy to provide one.
So can I take this moment to ask you if there's a way we can put that on the face page of our website so that people don't have to dig so deeply?
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh for next time, which we don't know when that is, uh we're gonna focus on departments. So we're gonna look at position changes, uh expenditures by department, and uh we can have a Q and A with the departments themselves. Uh, we just have to decide when that will be, um typically, it's a special meeting.
If I may make a suggestion, so at the end of this, uh we actually have two weeks um prior to the next meeting in June, which is June sixth, and so uh excuse me, three weeks, but we have two weeks in between the next meeting as opposed to the typical one. So we have the twenty fourth, or excuse me, the twenty third coming up next Tuesday and we have the thirtieth next Tuesday that are both open potentially for that if council should choose to use another Tuesday for these um special workshops. Or whatever council desires, I just, it, it's good timing in the sense that we do have an extra week in between our next um meeting in June.
So will an email go out or is that something you need to decide in this moment?
Well, we don't need to decide it now, um just food for thought and then we'll have a Assistant City Manager or, or um Executive Assistant Fazio send out um emails and get your guys' input.
Great. Okay, okay.
All right, um.
Are you ready for questions?
Uh, one less com, or last comment, uh so uh next time, it's about departments and then we will adopt the budget, that's the last step. And when we go to adopt the budget, I plan to present um uh information about Measure H, where that money is going, uh we're gonna talk about reserves and uh potentially a budget expenditure policy. Um, and also, I'm hoping, but I can't promise that our new product through ClearGov, this is an online budget, uh it's pretty slick, I just couldn't do I had, I wanted to start with the budget document first so that I could, you know, build out the website to reflect the document. I'm hoping that will be available in June, but uh I can guarantee you, this is the last time I put together that bu, budget document. Cuz in the future, it'll be an interactive tool online and it will allow you to print to PDF. So you can print out the whole budget or you can just print out sections that you want. So I will have more information about that um at our last and final budget um meeting.
And access to that website will be available to the public as well, correct?
Yeah.
Great. All right, so does anybody have any questions for um Director Millar?
Can Councilmember Castellano? Um, I was just thinking um that it could be interesting to maybe as part of the budget process to see a report on the ARPA funds that, you know, kind of came in over the last couple of years. Um, and just, it, you know, people bring them up of like, where, where did these go? Who are they going to, just to kind of show like how they were spent in the city? If you wouldn't mind, I know it's not really pertaining to future forward budget, but um, yeah.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
It's probably a dumb question, but H and I, Sixth and Seventh and Old Town Paving, I know we bit them out. Those were all, money was all allocated last fiscal year, we have like major projects that people didn't see on there that are gonna be happening. But I, I just, just so, I understand too, I forget, um, yeah, there you go.
Yes, so uh that was in twenty three, twenty, twenty two, twenty three. Um, what happens with these big grant projects is that they don't always happen and I hesitate to keep putting their big, I mean, four million dollars actually changes their, affects the needle on the budget. So what I plan to do um late in the summer, when all of our expenses come in for June, is I'm going to take an item to council to roll the budgets over. So we'll see all the progress on those big projects that were in this current year budget. And then you'll see, and then in some cases, it will be uh supplemented with some of the current year monies. So as you just mentioned, the multi-modal corridor, we're adding a million from our streets fund for that project.
Great. Okay, so we'll open this, if there are no more questions. We'll open this item up for public comment, is anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Can you see anybody? So no one from here, but is there anybody on Zoom?
Not seeing anybody.
Okay, thank you, so seeing no one, we'll bring it back, any final comments? Thank you, Director Millar, we appreciate you. Okay, so uh future agenda items. Uh, uh Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Okay, I haven't proposed something before, so if I start walking off the wrong direction, let me know. Um, so I uh I had spoken with um Jim Glover, who's on the Humboldt Human Rights Commission, he's the head of that and he's a friend of mine about um maybe potentially coming if the council would be interested at some future point of having him come and do a presentation about what they do, um and kind of that importance in our community and um the relationship with our cities, so I don't know if you guys would be interested in something like that.
Three, four. It would seem.
Yay.
Good job. Any other future agenda items? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, well, we're piling on to the presentation train here. Uh, I appreciate that we reached out to Rocker, the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. And I still wanna see their presentation, uh but I believe there was a misunderstanding when I requested Core Hub, which is the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Corps. Uh, and I, uh they're part of Humboldt Area Foundation and I believe that's the one that I requested last time, so that being the case, I'd like to see both. And I think it's already scheduled with Rocker, I'd like to see Core Hub, they're the one responsible for the uh sorry, I'm blinking on it, right, North Coast Offshore Community Benefits Network, so.
And council, I apologize, that was my misinterpretation, when I heard Redwood Regional, I went automatically to Rocker. And so I reached out to Rocker and they're scheduled for our second meeting in June, I'll reach, if council chooses, I'll reach out to Core Hub and get them scheduled as soon as possible.
Are folks interested in bringing that other presentation forward? Thumbs up, thumbs up.
I got one last piece, please.
Looks like everyone's engaged, okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, while we've still got people's engagement, I guess, uh could we have an opportunity to review our environmentally friendly purchasing policy? Or at least get an update on where things are with its objectives?
Yes, we can, we can bring it back again, um I believe it was just prior to the new council being onboard, we did uh do an update to um the environmentally friendly purchasing policy, I believe. Three months ago, something like that, but we can uh bring it back for a discussion if that's what council um wishes.
What do you guys think, thumbs up, thumbs sideways, thumbs down? Okay, so could you repeat, please?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm requesting that we have uh an a report or an update of our environmentally friendly purchasing policy. Okay.
Thumbs up all around.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor.
Actually, can I, one moment?
Yes.
I'm just curious if anybody needs a bio break, we usually take a break at eight, or we can just try and power through, is everybody good? Okay, all right, I'm, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, ma, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and councils. Um, tonight, we have Director Gerving, it's been a great night for me and great staff and I didn't have to do much, so this is wonderful. So Director Gerving is gonna come up and give a, a, a brief overview of some of the legislation and the status of fleet electrification, as I said to the previous public commenter, this is just a, a brief overview and we'll come back to council and to appropriate um committees and commissions to discuss a more in-depth um review of the fleet electrification, but welcome, Director Gerving.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, as the city manager indicated, this is kind of a preview, I wanna give you a brief overview of of where we are, some of what's happened, uh some of what's coming next and then get some feedback from council. Not here at the meeting tonight, but uh I'll, I'll tell you when I get there. Um, in any case, Deputy Director Isa presented to the Energy Committee at their most recent meeting uh some information, a quite lengthy presentation about uh the status of our fleet electrification efforts. Um, and some of the regulatory changes that are coming up and implications of, of, of those. Currently, we have uh three electric vehicles, oh, sorry, four electric vehicles in the city's fleet. Two Chevy Bolts that are here at City Hall as pool cars and that sort of thing. One electric uh Ford E-Transit that Uplift uses. And then uh the um parking enforcement vehicle is also electric, but it hasn't been utilized a whole bunch uh since its purchase. We've been expanding both our public and fleet EV charging infrastructure with the charging station here at City Hall, uh the public facility on H Street. And right now, staff is actively working on a grant application uh for a DOT, a federal DOT grant for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. That would bring about two point two million dollars worth of funding uh for fourteen different sites, that's what's in the list right now. Uh, that wouldn't go to construction until twenty twenty five and twenty six. And there is a twenty percent match required for that, so you do the math, that's four hundred forty thousand uh dollars worth of match funding. In the meantime, we can absolutely look at uh state grants and, and other funding In the meantime, we can absolutely look at state grants and, and other funding opportunities to fill that gap so that it's not just a burden on the general fund. As I mentioned, we have four EVs right now. That's compared to well over 100 vehicles that our Fleet Services Division maintains from patrol vehicles and fire engines and command vehicles, heavy equipment, utility bed trucks, pickup trucks, and then a relatively small number of passenger vehicles. Presently, a lot of the vehicle types in that list that I mentioned just don't have EV alternatives. There are some exceptions. You can get an EV medium duty dump truck. You can theoretically order one. What the lead time is, we don't know. The cost of that cabin chassis, though, is well over three times the cost of a standard diesel cabin chassis. And then you look at the charging infrastructure, which I'll, I'll get to. But like I said, there just aren't a lot of options for electric vehicles for a lot of the vehicles that we operate as a city. That being said, we know that there are some big drivers for, for fleet electrification, which is why we're actively working on it. One of those is like the combined, you know, goals of the council and the Climate Action Plan, knowing that fleet electrification is a big priority. And then some regulatory changes, like the City Manager mentioned. The California Air Resources Board recently enacted some pretty significant new changes that require certain fleets, like the city of Eureka, to have 100% of their new vehicle purchases be electric by 2027. That, given the state of the market right now, is very, very aggressive. And in, in our analysis, not looking tremendously practical, but we're, we're working on it. We're looking at it. And then also, you know, trying to determine whether those regulatory changes that were just enacted might be revised before the deadline comes. There is an exception in that regulation for emergency vehicles as they're defined in the vehicle code. So things like fire engines, patrol vehicles, but not other heavy equipment that we use as a city that for all intents and purposes are the same as a fire engine. For instance, you look at one of our VACCons, it's a very large piece of equipment with, you know, a lot of pumps and, you know, large compressors and things like that. And mechanically, it's a lot like a fire engine from a weight standpoint, a lot like a fire engine, actually heavier. Cost standpoint, like a fire engine. It's the type of vehicle that right now, the market doesn't have an EV alternative for. And I, I mentioned that, or maybe I didn't mention, but there's some uncertainty about whether these EV fleet requirements pertain to all of our fleet vehicles or just the medium, heavy and heavy duty equipment. It, either way, it's going to be challenging and it's going to have some, some significant cost and operational considerations. Those carb regulations aren't accompanied by any funding, so it's not like there's a big pot of grant money out there or loans or anything like that to finance improvements to our facilities or improvements to our fleet. And then, as I mentioned, there are market challenges. In a lot of cases, the vehicles just aren't there yet. One of the things we're doing between now and before these regulations hit is looking at options for fleet electrification implications. Looking at charging infrastructure, which we've talked about some. Looking at alternatives to our existing fleet configuration. So where are we using a pickup truck right now where a passenger vehicle might be a suitable option? What are the implications of that? If we, you know, one of the reasons that the city has historically purchased a lot of pickup trucks is in the event of a disaster, a pickup truck is a lot more versatile and can be used for an emergency response when you need to move equipment, move barricades, things like that. So that's kind of the basics of where we are, a little bit of a summary of what the upcoming regulations look like. Wanted to give you this preview of an upcoming lengthier presentation from Deputy Director Isa. And if you have specific questions that you would like addressed during that presentation, please get in touch with me in the next few weeks. And we can make sure that we cover it ahead of time. Don't want to take too many questions tonight and run afoul of the city attorney. But, but if you could just reach out directly in the next few weeks, I'd be happy to make sure we get your question answered when we come before you with a better presentation.
Thank you. So you're not taking questions this evening? We're going to wait till this is brought back?
I mean, I could take a list of your questions and, and let you know, yeah, we're going to answer that.
Can we send those in an email?
I just want to make one comment. We do have another electric vehicle charging going into the municipal auditorium as a part of the upgrades for that as well, so.
Great, thank you. Before you go, Councilmember Moulton?
I just had an easy clarifying question. Having the, is it that we'd have to only purchase electric vehicles from 20, sorry, was it 27?
27.
Going forward, not that we have to replace the fleet by then, but that at that point, when we have to replace a vehicle because it's at end of life, we'd have to replace it with an electric one.
Correct.
Except for these other things that are going.
And a lot of the discussion that's been out there in the fleet operations, you know, the broader community statewide is what will this do in the years between now and this 2027 deadline? Will we see a lot of fleets purchasing vehicles that they otherwise wouldn't? To sort of get ahead of those regulations and buy themselves 10 or 15 years afterward for the market to catch up?
Thank you, and Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I can email this too instead if I need to, but I just, when you said, speaking of the EVs by 2027, when you said it was impractical, I'm wondering if that was just, if you meant because it's cost prohibitive and that there are some of them that are not available? Or if there was some other thing that you meant by it's impractical?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's both of those. The cost is significant. When you look at the cost of, and this will be covered much more in depth in Deputy Director Isa, Deputy Director Isa's presentation. But when you look at the cost of just replacing a given vehicle with an EV option, because in a lot of cases, we can't use the, the least expensive EV. It just doesn't fit with our fleet configuration. You're looking at, you know, at least twice the cost to maintain our fleet in its current configuration as we do now. And then you add to it charging infrastructure, which, you know, is not something that anybody's opposed to. You just have to take those implications into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Girving.
Thank you.
And this leads us to our council reports. And tonight, we're going to start with Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. I do have a travel report to give. I went to Fort Bragg on May 12th for the Redwood Empire Division of Cal Cities. And that was a great, it's always a great affair to connect up with Ukiah, Fort Bragg, Point Arena. Whole bunch of cities were there and we talked about bills that affect all of us. I learned about Fort Bragg. Chief of Police gave a presentation about the Care Response Unit, which is basically like a lot of our programs. They use two social, social service people basically to respond to crisis, mental health crisis. And it was a really interesting program they have. And I thought it's worth talking, if you ever want to talk about it, let me know. But it was great, the chief's great there, good guy. We talked about, gosh, it was really a great get together just to explore what we're all doing on a lot of avenues and good time. And then I, I attended Portrait of a Graduate, Eureka City Schools put on. They're trying to change how, how we educate our youth. And so I think about 30 of us were there. And we got to brainstorm and strategic, do some like kind of visioning exercises where we looked at, what do we want to see our, our kids do? Or what do we want to see as our kids become once they exit school? And it was really a great event, too. And then I just want to say the strategic planning we did, I, I enjoyed working with all of you and, and staff, and I thought that was Berke and Matt did a great job. And I really appreciate all of you and what we're trying to do for the city. And so, thank you. And I want to, lastly, I want to thank those that attended the Cooper Gulch cleanup. That was on the same day as strategic planning, but thank you to those of you that came out for that. And I had a bunch of typical meetings, but I'll need to talk about those, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Councilmember Costellano?
Okay. Also attended the strategic visioning and yeah, feel very thankful for the generative experience that that was. HWMA meeting went well. Attended the H, sorry, I won't, Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting went really well. And then the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting went well. I will say, there's some really great innovative projects going on with Humboldt Transit Authority in terms of a long distance coach that will be hydrogen powered that's getting built, like the first of its kind that's getting built specifically for this region so that, you know, kind of like you can take a luxury bus ride from here to Ukiah and then connect to other transit services. It's going to be super cool. So keep an eye out for that. Attended the Humboldt Community Services 2x2 meeting and the Chinese Lunar New Year festivities and Arts of Life.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Just as everyone else too, the strategic visioning that we had last weekend, no, the weekend before, sorry. So I'm looking forward to that coming to fruition as we are the historic city of the future. So thank you for that mic drop there, Scott. I have Third Ward Town Hall planned this Thursday at 5:30 at 2100 J Street. So it's the Eureka City Schools Admin Office in the Fran Taplin Boardroom. So looking forward to that excitement later. And I appreciate, I think it's going to be Kristin Kenyon that's helping answer some of the questions about our planning and permitting process. I think Dr. Stokes said that he would attend as well, just to kind of answer any questions that folks might have around that particular project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, same thing, strategic visioning. I felt like it was a really great opportunity to get to know everybody else and kind of understand their different points of view and their passions about different projects, which I really appreciated. And just directions coming up. And then I got to attend Pathway to Payday this morning, which is like, just, I think, one of my favorite things that the city is involved in. I just, I love it. I feel like it's such a hopeful thing and there's such a wide variety of people that participate in it. And I just like, feel like such a cheerleader when I'm there and like, and I was not a cheerleader, but I think this is how they feel, where you just get really excited and you really want to see what they're going to accomplish and what they're going to be able to get and really build them up. So I just, I love that. And then just other little things, I, I went to the Casa Gala, I think you guys, I think everybody already knows, like Casa is near and dear to my heart. And got to sit at the same table with Steve Madrone, which was really wonderful and with my family. And yeah, and then just popped by Redwood Art Association was doing some things, trying to make things more accessible, ADA accessible for some of their stuff there and just checked in and got to pop in on that. And Jim, a local artist, Jim McVicker, goodness, I can't talk. Anyway, just out in the community, enjoying everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any travel to report, but I also agree that our staff rocks at strategic visioning. It was really great to hear everybody's ideas, especially across departments. Just how different folks have really great thoughts about what's going on in general. And to see such a unified vision across staff and leadership as well. I think sometimes we hear, why are we paying attention to this and not that? And the answer is almost always, we're doing both. That it has to all be done at the same time, that we need to address homelessness and have awesome parks all at the same time. And that, you know, takes a lot of coordination and that's what I'm watching our staff do. And it's, it's really very encouraging. I attended the JPA Board Meeting for the Fire District, which is probably the wrong way to say that, but just helping to keep the community safe. Also attended Lunar New Year Celebration by Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders in solidarity and the Lion Dancers. And what a great Arts Alive, it was absolutely packed downtown just to see like the streets full of people. And such a diversity of humanity out there and food trucks and dancing and fun. And it's just really felt like such a lively time in Old Town. I was very happy to be there. And that's all, oh, no, wait, the Kite Fest is this weekend. We already said that. The Kinetic Grand Championship is next weekend. Humboldt's oldest and largest community art event that is free to watch and has been for over five decades. And of course, the Forest Moon Festival coming up after that, which is not only happening at the park, but all over town. So check out, your, your favorite business might be doing something interesting for the Forest Moon Festival. And you can, you know, dress like a Jedi and walk around town. That'd be fun.
I'm still suggesting council cosplay.
Council cosplay? Okay. I call Obi-Wan.
Coming back. Thanks for reporting on Arts Alive. I'd forgotten that in my report. That was so fabulous, you guys. That was just, it just really reiterates how we work together so well as a community and really grateful for that. And with that gratitude and appreciation, this meeting is adjourned.